We are going to be looking at Article 6 on New Obedience tonight. My intention was, as I said a minute ago, my intention was to get through New Obedience plus Baptism in the Lord's Supper, but that is not going to happen tonight simply because with the season of Lent, my time didn't allow for that. Plus, I found my presentation on New Obedience went a little longer than I had anticipated in the first place. So we're going to be, go ahead and get started. We'll get, pull up the presentation. Okay, so Augsburg Confession, Article 6 on New Obedience. And we looked at this last time, the regression of the Augsburg Confession thus far. We began with looking at God. He is the source of all things. He is the one who created us. Then we looked at the problem, original sin, Adam and Eve fall into sin and the reality that now all of us are born with sin, with original sin, with a sinful nature. And we're in need of a Savior. And then we looked at Article 3 and we saw that Savior. God comes to our aid. God rescues us. God does for us what we couldn't do for ourselves. And then justification is the result of the work of the Son of God. By His work, we can be made right. And then God gives us not just His Son, not just the accomplishment of justification, but He then gives us the ministry as a means by which He then ensures that justification is given to us by Word in Sacrament. And then He brings us into the church to gather us around the Word in Sacrament to continue to sustain us in the faith. Okay, now, tonight we're looking at the New Obedience, or what is often called Sanctification. And New Obedience and Sanctification are really something that flows out of the justification and the work of Jesus. So they are the result, it is, New Obedience is the result of the work of Jesus and justification, and that will then lead to New Obedience. I was going to also look at Word in Sacrament tonight with the Baptism in the Lord's Supper, but we're not going to get to that yet tonight. We'll get to that next time. But those things also are not just kind of an independent thing floating around off on their own, but they are the result, they are, you know, the accomplishments of Jesus and the justification He has won for us, delivered to us through the ministry that He has established, bringing us into the church. So it's all connected. And then that Word in Sacrament will be a means by which God is at work to continue to bring about New Obedience in our lives. Okay, so here's how we could say it. The saving work of Jesus on the cross, by which we are justified, is delivered to us through God's Word in the sacraments. These are administered by men serving in the office of holy ministry, which Christ established for the sake of His church and to extend His kingdom. And this will necessarily result in the New Obedience of believers. So good works will flow from these things. Here's what the article actually says, Article 6, New Obedience. "Our churches teach that this faith is bound to bring forth good fruit. It is necessary to do good works commanded by God because of God's will. We should not rely on those works to merit justification before God. The forgiveness of sins and justification is received through faith. The voice of Christ testifies. So you also, when you have done all that you are commanded, say, 'We are unworthy servants. We have only done what was our duty.' The Fathers teach the same thing. Ambrose says, 'It is ordained of God that he who believes in Christ is saved, freely receiving forgiveness of sins without works through faith alone.'" So what is sanctification? We get that word thrown around quite a bit. The Greek is Hagiasmos for sanctified, and the root word of that is Hagias, holy. So you can see at the very root of the word is the idea of being holy. And then we also have in Latin, Sanctus, that's part of the liturgy. When we sing the Sanctus, it's a holy, holy, holy. Well, Sanctus is holy. Sanctification then would be being made holy. So sanctification very simply is how we are being made holy. Okay, and sanctification is used in two different senses in Scripture. We see it used in the wide sense that we have been made holy, like in 1 Corinthians 6:11. "You were washed, you were sanctified, you were justified in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ and by the Spirit of God." So this is something that has already happened. You've been made holy because you've been covered with the righteousness of Christ, because the Holy Spirit has made you holy. So in the wide sense, our sanctification is complete because we've been made holy through the blood of Jesus and the work of the Holy Spirit. Sanctification though is also used in the narrow sense that we are being refined and growing in holy living through the work of the Holy Spirit.
Okay, now we see Him now.
"For this is the will of God, your sanctification, that you abstain from sexual immorality." So in the narrow sense, then our sanctification is ongoing as the Holy Spirit works in and through us to lead us to more godly living. Okay, so this is the sense primarily that we're going to be talking about tonight, sanctification as the idea that as God is at work in us and through us, as the Holy Spirit does His work, that it results in holy living. All right, so good works are the fruit of justification. Jesus talks about this in Matthew, Chapter 7. "Every healthy tree bears good fruit, but the diseased tree bears bad fruit. A healthy tree cannot bear bad fruit, nor can a diseased tree bear good fruit." Okay, so fruit here is, you know, the works. And the fruit doesn't make the tree, but rather the tree makes the fruit. So the works don't make somebody holy, but somebody who has been made holy, somebody in whom the Holy Spirit is at work, will then do good works that are holy. Therefore, if we want to do good, we must be made good. The good works are not, it's not that the good works lead to us becoming holy, but the fact that we have already been made holy by the blood of Jesus, that we are then able to do the good things that God would have us do. And that goes back to 1 Corinthians 6:11. "You were washed, you were sanctified, you were justified in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ and by the Spirit of God." Hey, a little bit of a baptismal imagery there, right? You were washed, and we're going to get to that next time. So the Holy Spirit, through the means of grace, brings us to faith. And faith not only receives salvation and justification won for us by Christ, but then that faith is going to result in good works. It's actually going to evidence itself by the fruit of our good works. And Galatians 5 is noted in Article 6, that the fruit of the Spirit is "love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, faithfulness, gentleness, self-control; against such things there is no law." So as the Holy Spirit is at work in us, that fruit will be evident because the Holy Spirit will bring it about. All right, so you may have seen these T-shirts, "Weak on Sanctification." And sometimes you hear Lutherans that'll actually kind of brag about this, then they'll say, "Yeah, I'm weak on sanctification." And their point is, "We're so strong on justification. We know that it's without any works that we're saved, so we don't want to talk about works at all." But right here in Article 6, Lutherans are not to be weak on sanctification. What does it say? "Our churches teach that this faith is bound to bring forth good fruit." Okay, it's not optional. It's not something that, that may happen, but it is simply the result of what God is doing. It will bring forth good fruit. And it is necessary to do good works, it says. Okay, so we are not weak on sanctification, because if we were weak on sanctification, that would be contrary to Scripture, right? We said it before, justification leads to sanctification. So Ephesians 2:8-10, "By grace you have been saved through faith. This is not your own doing. It is the gift of God, not a result of works, so that no one may boast." So yes, the salvation is entirely accomplished for you by Christ. Your works play no part in it whatsoever, but then we are His workmanship created in Christ Jesus for good works, which God prepared beforehand, that we should walk in them. So God does desire us to do good works. He does desire us to live sanctified lives. We shouldn't continue in sin, that grace may abound, as Romans 6 says, right? What then shall we say? Are we to continue in sin, that grace may abound? And the answer is absolutely not. How can we, who died to sins, still live in it? Do you not know that all of us who have been baptized into Christ Jesus were baptized into His death? We were buried therefore with Him by baptism into death, in order that just as Christ was raised from the dead by the glory of the Father, we too might walk in newness of life. So we are called and we are equipped to walk in newness of life. Now, will we continue to sin? Yes. The idea that we are simul estis et picahter, that we are at the same time justified and still sinful, that that's a reality that will be with us until the resurrection or until, until we, you know, we die. But the idea of being simul estis et picahter, that we are, you know, at the same time saint in sin or justified and still sinning, is not an excuse to live in sin, but it's simply the, the status that we are living in. But we are to fight against that sinful nature, and we are to desire to do the good things that God would have us do. Here's how Chymnates puts it in his loci. "Therefore, this is the way to teach the doctrine of good works and to establish and preserve it. First, the Holy Spirit is received, who is to renew our hearts, free our will, which has been in captivity, and in some, to create a new man who delights in the law of God. For in this way truly good works can be presented to God. And in the law of God, there will also be good fruits when the tree has been made good." Okay, so you are set free by the Holy Spirit and now able to do good works that are God pleasing, and that's, that is God's will for us. Okay, now we should not rely on these works to merit justification before God. This is again a quote from Article 6 itself. "We should not rely on these works to merit justification before God. The forgiveness of sins and justification is received through faith." Okay, our works play no part in it, not even a tiny amount. Okay, we don't rely on these works for justification. That's entirely received through faith, accomplished by Christ. Okay, so as Christ tells us, after we've done all of the good things that we've been called to do, what are we to say? "We are unworthy servants. We have only," and it should say, "done what was our duty." So we are unworthy servants. We've only done what is our duty. Good works are not something we do so that we can be saved, but because we have been saved. You know, we talk about faith alone, and faith alone is what saves, but then faith is never alone. Faith always and necessarily does result in good works. My old Greek prof, poor guy, had to try to teach me Greek. It was quite the ordeal for him. He wrote an article in the Concordia Journal, not too terribly long ago, talking about Article 6, which is a really, really helpful article to me. And here's how he put it. Here's one of the analogies that he had. "Are we like an inert bicycle, sitting there until the Spirit puts us into motion? Or are we more like a hiker, who has been given lungs, body, life in lungs, body and breath? The Spirit implores, 'Get up and walk with me.'" And Article 6, in agreeing, agreement with Scripture, would say, "We're not like the bike, where we're just simply an inanimate object and the Spirit is doing whatever He does, but that we are like, more like the jogger that has been given by the Holy Spirit life and lungs, body and breath, and the Spirit then implores us. The Spirit works through us and brings us to go and walk with Him." Another analogy, "Are we like the trumpet, which can only sit lifeless in a case until the Spirit irresistibly picks us up and blows life into and through it? Or is the New Obedience more like a singer, to whom God has given life, breath, talent, and even songs to sing, who then says, 'Sing for me,' or better yet, 'Sing with me.'" The latter more accurately depicts the Christian. So we're not, we're not like a trumpet, where there is nothing at all until the Spirit does something, and it's only in all the Spirit, but it's, it's that the Spirit has given us new life. The Spirit is at work in us and through us. And like a singer that's been given breath, talent, and songs to sing, and then the Spirit encourages us to do those things, and, and we desire to do those things because in so doing, we honor God. Okay, Luther on good works, he said, "Good works must be performed to glorify God, to testify to our faith, and to serve our neighbor." Okay, so why do we do the good works? We glorify God. It is evidence of our faith, and it serves our neighbor. All right, so how do we know what good works are? Well, God told us what good works are. He gave us the Ten Commandments. And in the Ten Commandments, we are told, here's what good works actually are. Here's what God wants you to do and, and what God doesn't want you to do. Luther in his Large Catechism says, "Everything that is to be a good work must arise and flow from and in this true fountain and channel. So apart from the Ten Commandments, no work or thing can be good or pleasing to God, no matter how great or precious it is in the world's eyes." And Chymnates says, "The things done by the regenerate in keeping with the law are truly good works." So God gives us the law, the Ten Commandments, and that's what He wants us to do. Those are the things He would have us do. So we don't look for some new great work in order to please God. That was happening in the Roman Catholic Church in Luther's day. One, that was one of the things he was railing against was the idea that to, to really do a God pleasing thing, to do a really good work, you've got to abandon the ordinary life, and you've got to become a monk, or become a nun, or become a priest. And only when you're doing those kinds of things are you really doing a good work. And, and so being a parent, being a good father, being an obedient citizen, promoting and sustaining, helping others to sustain life, you know, those things were not looked at as, as good works. They were simply kind of subworks that were, were not up to the par of the super duper good works done by priests and nuns and monks. Okay, so we are to do the things that God has commanded us to do, and that's summarized quite well in the Ten Commandments. Okay, so do our good works play any part in our salvation? And the answer to that would be, well, no, they don't. They don't play any part in our salvation. Will those who have been brought to faith do good works? And the answer is, yes, without question, they will do good works. Faith will result in good works. Are Christians to strive to do good works? And the answer is, yes, absolutely we are. We got to strive against our sinful nature. We got to strive to do the things that God has called us to do. And then which comes first, sanctification or justification? And this, the, the world tends to think holy living leads to you being right with God, and that's exactly wrong. What comes first is you are made holy by the blood of Christ and the Holy Spirit bringing you to faith in Christ. And then having been made good, having been made right with God, having been justified, then that will lead to sanctification. It will lead to holy living. Okay, so when we do good works that God would have us do, or we do the good works God would have us do because of thankfulness to God for our salvation, because of the Holy Spirit's work in us, because it pleases God, because it, our good works serve our neighbor, because we've been made good trees through baptism into Christ, and we could, we could add to this, but these, these are good things that we are called to do. Okay, and let's just look at the article one more time here. "Our churches teach that this faith is bound to bring forth good fruit." Okay, so faith will result in good fruit, in good works. "It is necessary to do good works commanded by God because of God's will." Okay, "It is not necessary to do good works for your salvation, but those who have been saved will necessarily do good works." Okay, "We should not rely on those works to merit justification before God. That's accomplished entirely by Christ." We went over that in Article 4. "The forgiveness of sins and justification is received through faith. The voice of Christ testifies, 'So you also, when you have done all that you are commanded, say, 'We are unworthy servants. We have only done what was our duty.'" And then the Fathers, this is not a new teaching. They quote Ambrose. "The Fathers also teach the same thing. Ambrose says, 'It is ordained of God that he who believes in Christ is saved, freely receiving forgiveness of sins without works through faith alone.'" So they want to down and make sure everybody understands, yes, good works are necessary, but those good works are not going to save you. All right, questions or comments or... Also, if you have questions regarding baptism or the Lord's Supper that you want to type in, that we can use for next time in preparation, feel free to do that now as well. Did anybody... Questions, or did you have any questions or points of clarification? No? Okay.
Pastor?
Yeah.
This is Marty Pollard.
Yep.
Question for you on the, the good works. I found it interesting the way you say that the good works are laid out for us to do the way in the Ten Commandments. I don't want to kind of catch you on the spot here, but can you maybe expound on, maybe pick a commandment or two, how, and maybe it's not as quite as obvious to the eye when you read through the commandment, how that, how the good works can manifest themselves as a result of reading the commandment?
Yeah, so these are the things that God wants us to do, or, you know, that God has laid out for us. Here's the things I want you to do and don't want you to do, right? So the first commandment, right, "You shall have no other gods." Well, in that commandment, we learn God would have us worship Him. God would have us give reverence to Him, that we would hold Him above all else, that He would be first in our lives, and that have us fear, love, or trust in anything else. You look at the second commandment, "How are we to use His name?" Okay, so it's, you can look at the, the negative side of it. Says, you know, "Here are the things that you are not to do." So we don't misuse His name. We don't use it inappropriately. We don't curse by it. We don't deceive other people by it, but we are to use His name in, in the ways that He would have us. So in prayer, to give Him praise, to speak His name to others, to tell others what He has done for them. Those are all proper ways of using His name and according to His will. The third commandment, you would look at that of "Abba thae by keeping it holy." Well, yes, God would, well, the, the good things God would have us do there, that we would gather for worship, that we, we would be there to receive His gifts each Sunday and, and other times as well, that we would rest in the forgiveness that He is giving us there. Those are, you know, the fourth commandment, "Honor your father and your mother." Well, it's more than just father and mother. It would also extend then to anybody that God has. So proper reverence or respect, I should say, proper respect for teachers, for your pastor. Hey, I like that one. Proper respect for the president, for sirs. Okay, so how we, how we give proper respect to those individuals would be a way in which we actually keep that commandment. How we honor our parents, how we take care of them as they age, how we do the things, you know, that they ask us to do when we're younger. Those are all ways in which we, we keep that commandment. Commandment, you know, well, it's, the, the positive side of that would be then that we uphold human life, that we take care of others in their bodily needs, that we take care of those who are aging and make sure that they're cared for, that we are unable to take care of themselves, that we would... Biddles and charities to take care of physical needs for individuals. Those would all be good things to be done according to the fifth commandment. "You shall not commit adultery." Well, getting at your marriage is a God pleasing thing. Seeking to, to strengthen your marriage, encouraging others in their marriage. For those who are unmarried, remaining chaste, but then also encouraging others within their, their point as, as a single Christian. Those would all be that we are to do. But, you know, not stealing. Well, above and beyond that would be then protecting the property of others. So as, as Christians, we're called to make sure that, you know, if my neighbor's trash can rolls out into the middle of the street, I don't just go, "Well..." I don't just go, "Well, I'm glad it's not mine," and walk away. I go out and I get it and I move it back to the curb for him. We look out for not just our own possessions, but our neighbor's possessions and seek to help them to improve and protect what God has given to them. The eighth commandment, dealing with reputation. So not only do we not tear down somebody else's reputation, but that we would also build others up in their reputations, defend them, use our words in ways that are honest and God pleasing. The tenth commandment, or ninth and tenth commandments, coveting, would really be about how can we be content with the things God has given us? How can we be thankful for those things that God has placed in our possession and then use them in ways that are going to benefit not just ourselves, but others as well? So, yeah, God has laid that out in front of us and said, "Here, to live a God pleasing life, to do the things that are good."
Thank you. That was very helpful.
And Tracy says, "All of the things that you've mentioned bring to mind Ephesians 4 through 6." So I'm not going to look that up right at the moment, but you might want to do that on your own. Other questions tonight? All right, well, then let's go ahead and we'll finish up with benediction. "The Lord bless you and keep you. The Lord make his face shine upon you and be gracious to you. The Lord look upon you with favor and give you peace. Amen." Time, we will actually get on to the Lord's supper and baptism. So if you have questions before that time, get them to me.